Good morning. Today is Wednesday, October the 23rd, it's 2019. Notice has been given of a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is 9:00 a.m. We are at the Grimes County NX Building, 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. We've called the meeting to order. We're going to open with an invocation. We're going to ask our Brother Charles Tompkins from Salem House of Blessings to lead us in prayer, and then remain standing if you would for the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come, first of all, thank you for a beautiful morning.
Amen.
And Father, we ask your blessings now upon this day. Realize, Father, you have given us this day, and in this day we make the moment. So, Father, we come now asking your blessings upon this Commissioners Court, upon the Judge, upon all the Commissioners, everyone that is a part of this. Thank you, Father, that we're able to sit down sometime, not always agreeing, but we agree to a disagree and still get your purpose done. So, we thank you for everything that is about to happen, and we pray, Father, that it will be done in a timely manner, and you will get the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? We are now ready for public comments, and I have two that have requested time for public comments. The first is Gail Sharon and wants to agenda item proposed fire department contract. In general, are you for or the item against? The response is against. So, Gail Sharon?
Sharon.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The contract that you see in item eight, under the Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator, represents a 30% decrease in the funding that we have currently. It omits a critical part of the funding that our fire departments rely on. This funding, a 30%, 26 to 30% decrease, is punitive in nature. The citizens of this county deserve to maintain the existing funding, not a reduction. The volunteers of the fire department deserve to have equipment that is maintained and works as well as it has for the past 15 years. So, please do not approve this contract with this reduction. Amend it to include the critical part, which is called incident reimbursement, or otherwise known as run money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And second, we have Dan Sharon. Dan Sharon is going to speak on the fire department VFD contracts, also representing the Chiro VFD. Chief?
Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
Commissioners. I am Dan Sharon, Fire Chief at Chiro Fire Department. Been there for, since 2008. Back in about 2007, '08, our average for apparatus was about 30 years old. Today, it's 9.8. That's a heck of an increase on just the apparatus itself as being of good quality and be able to respond without any problems with it. The only reason we have that equipment is because we've used Chiro funding, not county money, because it's a capital expense, to get these apparatus. We have a couple of bank bills right now that we have to pay, but if we don't get a stipend for our incident command or our incident runs, we have to take that money and make our payments from it, plus go ahead and pay for the incidents that we run, the gasoline. And that only doesn't count, includes this gasoline, but all the equipment that these apparatus have to be maintained. And like my wife said, it's a, you know, it's a 26% discount, or not discount, but a slap in the face as you, you know, look at it, because those funds have got to come from somewhere. And without the run money, it's going to be really, really tough. You know, yes, we do get funding from the county, and I really appreciate it. I appreciate all the sponsors that we have and the donations that they give us, but with about a $60,000 budget, what we're getting from the county is not going to make it. And so, you know, we're at risk as far as our payments to the county, or to the bank, you know, on our apparatus, and maybe some of the services will have to be cut because we're not going to have the funds to, you know, put those apparatus on the road. So, I would think at least either go back to where we were with the run money, hourly rate, you know, plus mileage, or possibly just a flat rate per run. That way, it's easier budget, and you know what's coming up. So, you know, the judge and I have talked about flat rate, and he knows, he has our numbers as far as Chiro. But I think it's going to affect the community that we serve, you know, Singleton, Rose Prairie, Iowa, I mean, Chiro, plus we're mutually late to Walker County and all the other fire departments. So, it's going to be tough without that money. So, please, you know, take a look at it again, and, you know, try to vote it back in for, you know, the contract. The contract we have is a good contract. It just needs to be added that, you know, that benefit to the fire department.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, those are the only two notifications for public comments that we've had. We will now go to consent agenda items, number items number three, four, and five. Three is consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. And agenda item number five, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers, and there are none at this time. Hallelujah. Okay. I did have one question for the treasurer's office on this. Those bills that were incurred from 2019, I understand y'all back charge out of, or go through the books to the 2019, and then whatever's 2020 charges goes through the 2020 budget.
Yes.
So, there's going to be a little bit of that between now and, I guess, through the end of the next month, or?
Till about the 15th of November.
Okay. And then we get purely on the 2020 budget?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's no discussions about any of the agenda items three, four, and five, I make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, and five.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, four, and five by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We will go to agenda item number six. Commissioner Dobianski, considering to recognize the following employee for his years of service, Charles Temple, five years of service.
My pleasure this morning to recognize Charles for five years of service with Grimes County Road and Bridge Department. If you'll come forward, please.
County Extension Asia. Alan, I thought, yeah, I see you.
I'm here.
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so we got our last of the year, I'm going to borrow from your table. Last of the year interpretation event. We changed it up a little bit from the format that it had been the previous three times we've been in here. We thought this looked a little more professional, made us look a little more serious about what we were doing. On here, we've got Ag and Natural Resources, what I've done the past few months. My big highlights have been my farm and ranch visits. Summertime was extremely busy. We had a lot of unknown weeds from last fall when we had all that rain. Water rushed in. Weeds from the neighbors went to the other neighbors, went to the other neighbors, so nobody knew what weeds they had. So, we had a lot of site visits on identifying those weeds and getting a control plan for those producers out there. We also met with our Beef and Forage Committee a few times on planning 2020 events and programs for Grimes County based on what they saw as needs. There are kind of eyes on the ground out there. They see those producers. They are those producers every day, so we met with them. They've got a lot of great plans for us going forward in 2020. We're pretty excited about everything they've come up with that we're going to be doing. A big thing that took majority of my time the last few months was the disaster relief for the tropical storm Amelda that we had back at the end of September, I believe it was. That, I got a phone call to be deployed to go down to Beaumont and work the floods, and that was, they called and said, "You're leaving in the morning." So, there was not much preparing and getting, y'all know I'm not caught up in this office. I stay behind. But there was no, here's what we're going to do next week, get this set and everything around here. It was pack up and go. We spent a week down there, deployed. We rescued animals that were stranded on islands. We would go in there with airboats. We would rope those cattle, and we would take them out one at a time if we could. We also delivered square bales via Chinook helicopters out to stranded animals. We would go out there, fly over on an island, and we would land as low as we could, and then we would just throw the hay out to those cattle. There would be anywhere from 20 to 100 cattle stranded on an island at a time. We also set up two animal shelters in Chambers County and in Jefferson County where those animals that were coming in, we would take care of them. I traveled down with the Texas A&amp;M Emergency Vet Team, and we would get those animals to them at the shelter, and then they would take over, and they would assess those animals and watch them overnight and that sort of stuff. We stayed down there for a week doing that, day in and during the day and at night. So, it was a kind of a 24-hour going kind of deal. At the end of it, we put in here, our numbers were, we delivered over 1,400 square bales that were delivered through the Chinooks to 40, over 4,500 stranded cattle out there. So, it was a little different than Hurricane Harvey. The areas that were impacted down there were mostly the cattle ranchers. A lot of the horse people in those two counties, they're not as impacted as they were in Harvey. Harvey, it was the exact opposite. All of our horse people in Hurricane Harvey were the ones that were hit. This time, it was all our cattle guys. We don't have confirmed numbers on losses, but we did start to see, I traveled around the Texas Animal Health Commission down there, as the water receded, and we would start to find the deceased cattle in the low areas. So, there are plenty of them that we did not hit safe, unfortunately. But that took a lot of my time the last few months, so that's why we put that in there. Also, we have our Grimes County Master Gardener Association. We do have one master gardener in here with us. They have been on their own, running wild, doing their monthly meetings. Every Tuesday, they meet. They discuss educational horticulture and gardening-related topics. They usually have a guest speaker that comes in there. Sometimes, it's one of their own. Sometimes, it's an outside source from outside the county. They also have been on the extension beds there at the office. They've been slowly redoing that. They've got it looking really well right now. They've been, every Tuesday, I think, y'all meet to go out there. So, they have one, once a month, they meet and work out there for us. I have not been as hands-on with them as I'd like to be these last few months, due to how busy and behind I stay, but I have to commend them because they get the job done. They do it, and they don't ask questions. So, on the back, we've got some 4H stuff. I'm going to let Ms. Carla talk about the One Day Camp and the awards banquet. Yeah, I'm going to put you on the box.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so the Grimes County, this was like one of our first summers to do it. It was a one-day camp, and we had over 30 kids who attended from the Grimes County area. So, on that day, we had set up different educational stations, and then at the end of the day, we had a water balloon fight.
Yes, I lost. They got me.
And so, the 4H Awards Banquet, which, we can't, that's when all the kids from Grimes County come and receive awards for all the events and contests they did throughout the year.
I mean, that's just those two big events right there. The One Day Camp, we're going to extend that maybe to possibly doing it two days now, this next summer. The kids really enjoyed it. They did enjoy the water balloon fight. I was not going to participate, but they decided they would get me, so ended up participating.
You became a target.
I became a target, and they were bullseye. They got me. So, the awards banquet, we had that in August. We have that every year in August, and that's just showcasing those kids that competed at the county level, at the district level, and at the state level in 4H events. Also, those kids that went to major stock shows, we like to recognize them. Also, for the con sales that we do every fall, we like to recognize those kids that sold the cons. That money is, the money that we raise on the cons is how we fund our 4H program. So, we like to make sure and recognize it for that. A few other notes on there is the stock shows. I put stock shows and so forth. I didn't really have a good title for it, but here in October, we had State Fair of Texas, which actually started late September. We had a few compete in that, in the chicken show and the lamb show. We also had some do public speaking. We had some do food challenge. A team actually went and did food challenge. They also competed at Heart of Texas in some heifers. They showed heifers. They did food. The same team that did food challenge in State Fair went to Heart of Texas and competed as well. They did really well. I think they got third overall, so they represented Grimes County. We also had the Brazos Valley Fair in Rodeo we just wrapped up, and we had some kids there compete. Carson Carter won his class with one of his heifers, so we were really happy that Grimes County was represented there as well. I ran the lamb show. I was chairman for the lamb show. There was a lot of complaints, so they may not let me do that again. All in all, it went good, though. I'm making a joke. It was good, and Grimes County was more represented. So, Ms. Carla, back to you on some other stuff you've been doing.
Okay, so one of the big events we did was the back-to-school health and safety day, and thank you, Commissioner Walker, for helping organize and collaborate the back-to-school event. But the event that we did have, we have over 12 local businesses to actually donate to the back-to-school. We had over 500 backpacks that were stuffed and filled that day, and we gave out over 400 backpacks to kids in Grimes County. Also, the banks, the local banks donated too, and they was able to give us money for door prizes, and the door prizes included two tablets and headphones for the kids to use in school. And another big event I had was the child passenger to safety car seat event. That was held in Brine, in Brazos County, and with that event, we had over 117 inspections that day. So, over 117 people came out, and we gave out 77 new car seats. And we also will have a car seat event here in Grimes County, but I had to get with the district officers to exactly when and when I do I give out lines.
Thank you, Ms. Carla.
That's a quick view of what we've done the last few months. I think the last time we met was in July, when we came here and met. I was at, yes, I was at that.
Y'all brought cupcakes in too, didn't you?
That was proclamation. I do remember that, because I missed the cupcakes. I was down there floating in the water whenever y'all were having cupcakes.
I just noticed y'all didn't bring cupcakes today.
I do have something for you, though.
Oh, okay.
I want to say thank you, Alan, for your service to the state of Texas for what you did with the hurricane assistance.
We, a few upcoming events we've got on the back there. We've got the South Central Texas Couch Cash Plant, which is Friday. I'll be so glad when that's over with, because we jumped in way over our heads. We started a youth program for that last year. That's a multi-county program. We have nine counties involved in that, and we added youth to the program. And I'll just tell y'all, this Friday, we're going to teach them how to grill. We're going to have a grilling one-on-one session, so it's going to be over 70 kids is what we have confirmed right now. There's going to be over 70 kids with loaded grills, and then I'm in charge. I'll be so happy when Friday's over. What? Oh, no, I don't know. That's going to be the highlight of what we're doing Friday for those kids.
And it's located where?
It will be in Washington County, at the Washington County Fairgrounds. We're teaching them where their food comes from. It's all beef cattle related. We're going to be grilling flat iron steaks. Kent Fisher with KNC Meat is donating half of the steak, so we want to thank him for doing that as well. Navisoa Livestock Auction Barn has also donated all the waters for those kids, too, so we can put out a fire in the day. We are, we're excited for Friday. It's going to be a fun day. It's, y'all see smoke west of the, it's just us, so. That'll be us over there. We've also got Junior Leadership Lab, which is one of our big 4H events coming up to start. It's for our younger 4Hers. We're going to send them all to camp for a weekend in Huntsville and teach them how to be leaders, basically. They're going to have leadership opportunities. They're going to be able to get up to talk in front of all of our bosses and things like that, so that'll be good for them. Southern Classic Livestock Experience is December 14th and 15th in Brazos County. It's an opportunity for those young 4Hers that have never showed before to come out and bring their animals, and we're going to walk them through a simulation of an actual show. So, it just gives them hands-on experience. It gives the animals experience, understanding how to load and unload, and be shown in a lean and go back and go through the weight scales and take their weights and things like that. So, that'll be a fun day, too. Ms. Carla's got St. Joseph's Health Fair coming up on October 24th. Do you want to talk about that?
Yes, actually, it's tomorrow, so.
That is tomorrow.
Yeah, they have a health fair, and we will have an educational booth out there, so everyone come out, and I believe they will be doing some health screenings.
And free flu shots.
Okay, free flu shots.
That is essentially 4H trunk or treat is October 26th. We've got some kids that are going to be handing out candy and dressed up and spooky and getting their Halloween on, so. Golden Creek Health Fair, Rehabilitation Thanksgiving Dinner. The date's not set for that yet, if I'm right.
Yeah, and we, all we do, if you want to volunteer, we just get volunteers to help serve the residents. So, if you know anybody who want, usually our 4H kids will go out there, but if you want to help volunteer, you can.
Will that be on Thanksgiving Day?
No, they haven't gave us a date yet.
Okay, okay.
That is a quick snapshot of what we've done the last few months and what we've got coming up. One last thing I did not mention on there that we have coming up is Lunch with the Agents. That's December 18th at 11 o'clock, or 11:45 there at the Extension Office. We invite all of y'all to come out for that. We will basically showcase everything we did from January 1, 2019, to December 18th. We'll have a big packet put together with all of our information in for the year and kind of our end of the year, and then kick off to 2020. We have our, each one of us have a committee, and we'll have our committee members explaining what's going on. We'll have 4H kids there talking about what they've done in 4H and things like that. We'll, I don't know, we're going to cook something. If we can survive grilling, we may do that again. We're not cooking anything.
No, you're not.
I'm not cooking anything. That's what we got. We've got one more thing. This is from April 9th through 11th, when Judge went to a certificate of participation to the VG Young Institute of County Government Awards, and it's a certificate for you, for your participation in that. It's been sitting in my office since May. That just justifies how behind I am on getting things done. But I meant to bring it in July. I mentioned it in July, and I forgot about it, but.
And I just went to second session last week, so.
Should be getting another one for you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's what we got, and now we're going to go get started, because apparently we got something tomorrow, if you say.
Yeah.
We're all right.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
We do appreciate everybody.
Do you have any handouts that you're leaving for anybody in the audience that might want them?
We have two extras.
Three extras.
Three extras. If anybody wants to go through and look at and pass them around.
That'd be great.
We'll let y'all do that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good day and do what with it.
We'll now go to agenda item number eight, Emergency Management Sub, going to have to change that subdivision coordinator. Emergency Management Services Coordinator, David Lilly. Agenda item number eight, review and approve the firefighting services contract with B-Dies, Chiro, Richards, Whitehall, and Todd Mission Volunteer Fire Departments, and authorize the county judge a sixitory in C Attachment Eight. Mr. Lilly?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners. We'd like to point out that you do have four of the five fire departments. The chiefs are here, representing the five departments that have approached us thus far to work on negotiating the contract. And thank you, Chiefs, for being here. I know it's taking time out of your day. Basically, to bring you up to speed on where we are and how we got here, as you know, the judge put before the court back in August to terminate the contract with the association, and thus put it in the hands of each individual fire department to negotiate a contract with the county. Again, like I said, five departments have done so so far, and that includes B-Dies, Richards, Todd Mission, Whitehall, and Chiro. We also have two other departments that have approached us, Judge.
Want them for next week?
Yes, for Iowa and Anderson. This contract has gone through a number of iterations, and there were comments made at one point about why there were so many changes. To be honest, the changes were as a result of the individual fire chiefs and fire departments sitting down with us and making very good recommendations on how to make this contract, basically make more sense. So, the one that you have before you now is the most current iteration. The only change we made this morning, kind of prepared quickly, was on page five, or I'm sorry, page six. We changed the executed sentence to include the description, "This department qualifies as tier with a space," to reflect what tier level they are. I have also engaged with each fire department individually and gone over their certifications, their training, their, all the paperwork that they're required to submit as part of the contract, and I can say that all the departments, based on how this contract is written, all the departments are currently at tier four, with the exception of B-Dies, which has one item that is holding them up. They have a qualified safety officer, but not a certified, and I've talked with Chief Tamplin. He's working on trying to get their safety officer through the certification before the end of this calendar year. So, I would indicate on that one that they are in progress.
Do we have signed contracts?
No, that's what this is for today. It would have to be approved first by the Commissioners Court, and the judge sign, and then each individual department.
So, we're approving the contract?
Yes.
The written contract. And in order to be tier four, you have to be tier one, two, three?
Yes, progressive, yes, ma'am.
Progressive tiers.
If you look on the left side of that column, of those columns, it says for tier two is prerequisite, for tier two is tier one. Tier three, prerequisite for tier three is tier two, and then tier four prerequisite for four is three.
I'm just noting out loud.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we're going from the annual stipend of 32.5, which was previously given, to a stipend of 37.5?
Yes, for those that meet.
That meet that tier. We only, you said all of them meet that tier except for one, right?
Except for, currently, except for B-Dies, but again, based on how the invoice, I don't have the invoice form in front of me, but the way the invoice form is written, it's either current or in progress, or no, if they don't have it. All the departments have all the items that they're required for, the invoice also sent to all the colleges and federations, their membership with SFFNA and so on. But, like I said, for B-Dies, the only thing that there is in progress on, and that would go under, for that, that would go under tier two, is a certified incident safety officer.
And the way we prepared this, or the way it's prepared, is that if indeed a department was qualified for tier four, then that's an increase of $5,000 on their flat rate from the 32.5 to a 37,500 annual payment. I say annual payment, but it's going to be in four quarterly payments. And the reason for the quarterly payments was so that, just like a department, if they weren't at a tier four, and through the course of this year, they achieved a tier three or a tier four or the next level, we could then bump them to that higher, higher level Well, I guess one of the main troubles I have with every fire department, pretty much getting the same one if they have the same qualifications, is the fact that not every fire department is the same.
every fire department is the same with regard to amount of equipment they have to maintain or the amount of calls they actually go on, which, and those type of expenses regarding fuel, maintenance, tires, that type of thing. Whereas, you know, if a fire department may be able to bu, operate under this budget, but, you know, those fire departments, they go on fifty calls, but if they go on a hundred and fifty calls, that funding may be pretty short.
It could be, but I don't know that that's a situation that we're having with any fire departments.
Well, I mean, as far as this, this amount of funding, though, I don't, I don't think two, any two fire departments are probably the same as well.
No, they're not.
And like I said, the number of calls, the, the size of their, their district, you know, they, they all vary in length as far as, you know. It's just, I, I don't want to hinder our fire departments. And if we wanted to negotiate per fire department instead of having the same contract, we can actually, like we do our other departments in the county, how much, you know, what's your budget? What's your budget last year? What can you live with this year? Type of situation. If we could go through that process, but, but trying to do this kind of suddenly, it's kind of reducing the time we actually have to actually look into it and figure out what each fire department's budget needs to be.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with your suddenly determination.
Well, I mean, we came up, well, because we already had a budget.
We had a budget.
We, we came up. It was kind of when we made the decision to not contract with the
Association. The Association.
And then meet, meet with the fire departments. I mean, if nothing else, we could have kept, at least had oversight for ourselves instead of the, the association, and then kept the contracts, and then started looking into changing those contracts for the next year. Because of the, the time crunch we were on the budget and everything else, it kind of, I think we kind of jumped into this rather quickly as far as figuring out, you know, what the needs are of each fire department.
Well, part of it's what's the needs for the fire departments, but what's also the need for the Commissioner's Court?
Oh, absolutely.
The Commissioner's Court, you know, we've got a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that when we spend the tax dollars of our citizens, that we're getting the most return on that. And the record-keeping that was being presented collectively by the fire departments was not accurate. It was putting us in a situation of not living up to what we're supposed to do as a court. So the reason for doing away with the association was, in their comment, we're volunteers. We don't necessarily have time. I get it. We get it.
I agree with that, I agree with that a hundred percent.
So that's why we put David Lilly in charge of it. And David's been working, and I've been working with David, and I've been working with chiefs. We've had one-on-one and, and group meetings, and, you know, this is the final contract, but it's probably the, what, seventh final contract? Because each time we talk to a chief, they've had some input, they've had some ideas and suggestions, and as a result of their comments, we continue to revise and revise and revise. But whether the court agrees with my analysis or not, I feel like the money that we were paying as a court to the fire departments was out of hand, because we know that we were getting false reporting on the number of runs. We know that there were situations where people show up to the fire station, the chief sends them out, and we really only needed to have one or two vehicles out there. Yet we end up turning, turning, we have to then, in turn, pay for four or five vehicles. So at some point, we've got to say, enough is enough. We have a responsibility. We need to get control of it. So when we notified the association, because that was, I don't know the specific court date, was that May or June when we voted to go away with the, or not renew the contract with the association?
It was later than that.
Later than that?
Uh huh.
Okay. But any, okay, so, so whenever it was, we did that so we could have a liaison within the court that couldn't say, oh, I'm a volunteer. No, you're not. You're a paid employee, so we want the information. But we've, David and I have diligently worked, and, and they don't agree with everything, and we don't agree with everything that they've said, and, and that's fine. But this is a working document. We write it. We have the opportunity to, to modify it, to change it. At this point in time, I'm opposed to reinstituting the run cost. I believe that if the departments do a better job of managing their operations, they're going to be able to take care of their business. That's one opinion out of five.
Well, I think that, like you mentioned, the trouble before was the oversight of those runs. We have a person in place now that would be able to.
But he's not going to make, he's not going to be making fires and counting trucks and saying, oh, they sent five, they should have only sent two.
He can review, he can review what kind of came in as far as, you know, documentation. If we require certain documentation on what type of fire it was, or, or that, you know, nature, we could actually have an oversight of that, more like was suggested a, a flat rate. So it doesn't really matter if you send one truck or five trucks.
No, no, they're talking about a flat rate per vehicle.
No, no.
Per incident.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, I have to hold you.
Well, unless we had, unless we actually had one of, you know, a flat rate per incident. Because like I said, that, the, the actual, you know, you're, we're trying to treat, treat every fire department the same, whether they go on a hundred and fifty calls or they go on fifty calls. And the, the expenses on the hundred and fifty calls versus the fifty are three times as much, so.
And Commissioner, I appreciate your comments, but it's coming from your precinct. Your precinct is the only one that has an ESD in. And for the Iowa Fire Department, this year's revenue, or the twenty nineteen revenue that they're going to enjoy or receive, that the other departments are not, is right around a hundred and five thousand dollars. And what they got the year before was ninety-seven thousand, and ninety-three thousand, and eighty-something, eighty-six thousand. So, you know, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I can appreciate the pressure you might be getting out of your precinct, but that department is the best-funded department within all of the county on the basis of that ESD supplement. The other departments are running without that type of supplement.
Well, I have three departments in my, in my precinct, so only one of them has the, has the ESD, but that was actually voted by the citizens as a tax.
I totally get that.
To better the fire department, you know, add more equipment, better equipment. And I believe that was back in ninety. That might have been the first time I voted. So it was for that, but.
And that department, Iowa specifically, has updated and upgraded their equipment, and it's through the ESD they've been able to do that.
Absolutely. But as far as, you know, and that could be a negotiation later, but, but I'm, I'm trying to talk about, you know, all the fire departments within, we have eight, right, between?
Eight, not counting that seven.
So, you know, that, I just, and, and all eight are not the same. They don't have the same expenses. They don't have the same equipment. They don't make the same number of runs. So trying to give them all the same amount of money, I just don't, I don't want to hinder their service. Well, Mr. Sharon talked about a twenty-six to thirty percent cut. I mean, that's, that's substantial when it comes to, and, and none of this, and none of this money is being used for capital. And like you mentioned before, the donated money has to be used somewhere else, but it's, so if they have to use the donated money, they can't supply the right equipment they need in order to service our citizens. That's the main thing, is I don't want our citizens to suffer.
I think, Judge, you, you, when you sit down with the various fire departments that you met with, they presented also a, a flat rate. I didn't bring my folder with me, unfortunately. Did I not understand that, may I ask?
Sure.
Vickers, right? There was a flat rate of two fifty per incident.
It was two twelve.
The original flat rate, I believe, was two hundred and ten dollars per call, whether you take one truck or five trucks, whether you're out for five minutes or five hours. And it was a flat call rate. So the decision as to how many apparatus respond was based on the incident commander or the fire chief. And he makes that decision, and he, he puts that, that financial burden on his department to exceed the, the flat rate, and submerges on him.
So, in, in other words, I thought another part of it was, once it reached a certain, what was the other portion?
Once, once you reach a, a six-hour time limit, then it reverts to an hourly rate and mileage, because a six-hour time limit is not going to be a small event. You're not going to be the only department there. You're going to have other agencies and, and other departments involved. It may actually turn into a, to a, a NIMs-type event, where you have other commands taking, taking charge, bringing in city assets, state assets, and county assets to deal with the incident.
But it basically reverted back to the run costs?
To the run costs, yes.
After six hours?
After six hours.
What happened when it, you were, if you didn't make it, like the call was, was canceled?
If the call was canceled, then there was no, there was no expense incurred. If the call was canceled before the apparatus left the station, then the, the reimbursement funds didn't apply. The per-run allotment didn't apply. We, we do receive calls, automatic alarms in our areas. And by the time we arrive at the station, the alarm company has called back to the dispatch center and corrected the alarm response as either a malfunction, a malfunction in equipment, or, or inherent call, and have canceled the response. And we will arrive at the station, and we will actually get a page from dispatch disregarding our response. It's a trip to the station we take out of our own pocket, but it's not something that we're going to be reimbursed for, because we responded no apparatus. However, if we send apparatus and they are en route, once they leave the station, that reimbursement, that call reimbursed, uh, would be instituted.
Okay. From my understanding, some of the issues that we were having, and, and I'm not saying all departments was having this issue, and I want to say, first of all, thank you to our volunteer fire departments and for working with us. I understand that most of them have met with you, Judge, and sit down and voiced their concerns with you, and I thought was on, pretty much on the same page with you. I did talk to my chief, and I, I, I think that they saw this as a pretty good contract, and know that we're still a work in progress in trying to change things. And I think many of them agreed that the association just had outlived its time, and it was time for us to do something different. I.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, now, up until you get to the sixth hour, I don't, I, I, I'm not really sure about that, because that's going to bring back that run cost reimbursement kind of thing nightmare we were kind of going through. But a flat rate, every time a truck leaves a, I mean, on an incident, is not a tremendous amount. And I know that we've already put in a budget.
Correct.
And so we're kind of doing things kind of almost backwards?
Well, you know, part of this is to, at the end of the day, provide safety to the citizens of the county. I don't think anybody's arguing that at all. But also, that when we spend the county's, the citizens' tax dollars, that we spend it in the most efficient way. I'll give you an example. In meeting with the chiefs, you know, that we just recently did the road and bridge fuel budget, or fuel contract, and I believe the diesel fuel was two thousand, or two dollars and nine cents a gallon, or something like that. And not all, but a number of the fire equipment vehicles are diesel. So I just asked one of the chiefs, I said, how much do you pay for diesel? Uh, well, we fill up at the local filling station, and we pay three fifty-nine, excuse me, two fifty-nine a gallon. So that's fifty cents a gallon difference. Upon having the conversation with the chiefs, I called our coal cores contract, and I said, look, would you allow our fire departments to piggyback on the road and bridge fuel contract? I mean, they'd order the fuel, they'd pay for the fuel, but would you allow them, would you give them the same rate you're giving road and bridge for the county? And there was a, a hesitation, and then, yes. And then the second thought that I had, well, okay, maybe, so they could, they're not going to be filling up their trucks, so they'd have to have some type of a storage tank, but, and I don't know if all the departments have storage tanks or not. One thing I've asked Mr. Lilly, when he's talking to the chiefs, get an inventory of their tank facilities, because I also asked the question of coal cores, what's the best price you could give me on a five-hundred gallon tank? And they've got two kinds. They've got a gravity flow tank, and then they also have one that'll hook up to a one-ten or a battery. So, you know, it would be a department's choice, and those run about twelve, eleven hundred to twelve hundred dollars. Would you provide those? Would you sell those to the fire departments? And he said, yes. Now, I haven't mentioned that to the chiefs, but that might be an expense that the court would want to absorb for the departments that don't have bulk fuel capacity. We could assist them at buying their bulk fuel from our supplier at a better rate. And, you know, fifty cents a gallon or twenty-five cents a gallon, for what the chiefs are saying they would use, that would make a lot, I, uh, court, excuse me, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you don't have bulk storage, correct?
I do.
You do have bulk storage. But the, we had a conversation, but you wouldn't need regular bulk storage, because you said, that's just for your pumps and kind of stuff like that, so that really wouldn't be a benefit for you?
Right, gas would go bad.
Yeah, okay.
I do it five gallons at a time.
So in my conversation with Chief Norton, I, you know, I, I said, okay, maybe we don't need to be providing regular fuel, but most of the equipment uses a diesel fuel. So we, as a court, we could probably say, all right, we do a one-time expense of buying bulk tanks for those departments that don't have them, and trying to assist them that way. All's, I'd like us to do is do a better job of managing the resources, i.e. the tax dollars that we have in front of us. And if it forces the chiefs to be a little bit more dogmatic in how they run their operations, so be it. We're forced to run a better department or a better county, and even with what we've got coming up next year with the three-point-five tax cap, we have to be prepared. All of us have to be prepared to run our businesses better, reduce our businesses if we need to, because the money's not going to be available, not to the degree it has been. So how do we compensate? We can do a tax increase. How does that sound? Okay, no takers on that. So if we keep the tax at the current level, how are we going to better manage our assets and help the fire departments better manage their assets? And we all sharing that responsibility. This isn't easy.
No, I, I agree with that. I think we need.
But it's important for this area to the, to the, to the taxpayers' money, but we also don't want to hinder the services that they're used to, or, or put this, put the fire departments in a situation where they're not able to. Commissioner, I'm not going to be argumentative with you, but in some of the services that have been provided by the BFDs have been a problem to the county, because I've had more than one call from the Sheriff's Department about, we have too many people that have shown up to a scene, and now they're more of a traffic hazard than the officers in the accident are. Now, I can attest to that in every situation, and I, we do have a breakdown, and I don't have that with me, but the Auditor's Office gave me a breakdown of, on the calls, how many of them were traffic accidents versus how many of them were fires. I believe, Toledo, you provided me that info, did you not?
I did have those numbers.
Yeah, no, I know that. But I mean, I have a breakdown of, you know, how many of them were accidents and how many of them were, were actual fires and things of that sort, so. But part of it, we would have some departments that might not be qualified for extrication that go to the scene. So why do we pay them for showing up to the scene? But if we have a tier level such as this, and they've met the certification for extrication, and they have the equipment for extrication, then why don't we provide funding for them? And that was the idea of tier one, and, and in my mind, there wasn't going to be a department amongst us that was going to be at the tier one. I, I. I, I really felt that everybody would be at least a three or a four by the time the first year's over, and probably all of them be a four. That's why when we budgeted, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, we budgeted eight times thirty-seven thousand five hundred. That was the amount that we budgeted. Now, along with that, that's the stipend amount. We also budgeted another twenty thousand-plus dollars for the subscription for the seven-hundred, eight-hundred radio that we have stipulated in the contract, we're going to cover that cost. Another thing that, you know, we won't get credit for from the fire departments, and I understand that, but we just spent, I think it was ninety-two thousand dollars on upgrading the, uh, nine-one-one bunker over, no, not the VHS, the, the bunker, uh, for the radio system at dispatch. And it might include VHS, but the whole, I mean, the whole, uh, I'm using the wrong term, console, thank you, console, that's, that's ninety-two thousand dollars. Now, we're not going to do that every year, and, but we did it this year. And having that better communication helps the fire departments, helps the citizens of this county. So, where we're taking money from one area, we're spending money in another area, and we had a, we had a tight budget this year. We're going to have a tighter budget next year. And all's I'm saying is that we need to be better managers of those tax dollars in front of us, and it's not just the five of us that have that responsibility. It's all of those that participate in some sort of funding.
Okay. I wanted to add to what you were saying as far as, um, the goal of it is to make sure that our fire departments are ready and capable. So your tiers have been set up on certifications, and improving, um, their ability to respond, to save lives, and so we're finding all of them are now, uh, at the tier four possibly, except for one.
And we have three that we haven't evaluated.
And three we haven't evaluated. But if you look at it, we were given a stipend plus run cost. Although we've eliminated the run cost, if you meet the tier, we've increased you five thousand, because the stipend was thirty-two...
Correct.
Thirty-two-five, now, now you're going to receive thirty-seven-five. That is a five-thousand-dollar increase in the stipend, so it wasn't like we just reduced, um, the run costs. There is an increase on this side where we reduced over here, it increased over here, and you have the, the ability, if you're not at a tier four, to improve as you move out throughout the year. You can move from one tier to the next, so you're not stuck for the entire year at that, uh, tier. Uh, and it's, some of them, for everybody that doesn't have the ability to see this, it's, uh, it's not that everybody has to have some certification, it may just be one person in that department, and I don't think you touched on that, that, um, receives that certification, for them to move up to the next tier. It's not like the whole department has to move up on some of these to the next tier, but at least one person. So, um, I think we had to start from somewhere to improve, um, we've always, we've always had a challenge in trying to present a better contract, and I think with the help of the fire departments that have met with the judge and have tried to iron this out, um, I think pretty much they're in agreement with the contract that we do currently have, knowing that we're going to have some more work to do. But I want you to keep in mind, this is not totally just reducing you. There are other areas that we've increased in, you've increased your stipend, and we took on things that we didn't initially take on. We were just kind of, um, we got there. We've increased the communication abilities, not only the VHF radios, we also now have seven-hundred, eight-hundred radios. We're trying to move forward into, uh, the future. In other words, better communication. If everybody around us is communicating on seven-hundred, eight-hundred radios, the fire departments are not left out of the loop. There's still a lot of work to be done, and I think that this year will be a year of, um, it may be challenging, but it could be rewarding at the same time by knowing that our fire departments, everybody's capable, everybody can work together, everybody can communicate together, and it all takes time, and it takes us sitting down, collaborating together. And I think out of the collaboration that we have had from the fire departments that have actually truly sat down and talked with the judge about it, and, um, I think from everybody that I've talked to, they, they seem to be pretty good with this contract for now. So, uh, I do hear what you're saying, I do understand what you're saying, and it may be another chance for us to sit down and work out that scale of what we say, uh, in the future, that, okay, if we're going to pay two-ten a run, you know, or an incident, and it's not involving each vehicle we've got to be on the scene to count, then that may be, may be a better way for us to go. But right now, we've already built in thirty-eight-five into this budget.
Thirty-seven.
How much?
Well, and I didn't, I didn't realize that was a change, and I didn't realize that was a change. I made the motion to approve the budget, but I asked about what the changes were from the time we met before.
Uh-huh.
We had talked about consolidating that money, but we didn't talk about how much we were going to consolidate. I said, "Let's put all of it in there and then figure out when we actually talk and discuss with the fire departments." You know, I thought it was going to be, we're going to meet with each fire department as a whole and discuss their budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I didn't realize we had cut it that much.
Well, I thought we went through each one...
No.
When we did the budget.
Not, not when we proved it.
When we did the budget hearing, we didn't go step-by-step.
Yeah, but we didn't say we were going to put thirty-seven-five times eight in the, in the...
Yes, we did, yeah. Yes, we did. Because, and the reason is, because that was a budgeted number, and that's how we came up with that number.
Well, I did, I was not privy to any of that conversation. I went back and looked at some of the meetings, and I didn't, there was no, we had talked about, like I said, consolidating the number, and you said, you were talking about cutting all and just putting the thirty-two-five in there. I said, "No, we can't do that. We've got to just roll in what we've budgeted, the previous budget, and then, and then we need to discuss, you know, with the fire departments and figure out what a budget they can live with, if we want to do it just a lump, you know, lump sum amount."
And I'm not saying you didn't say that, I don't remember you saying that.
I remember him saying that, but at the last meeting, we went item per item that changed in the budget.
And that was not, and the fire department was not listed on that, because I made the motion, and I wrote down all those things that had changed, and that was not one of them. So I didn't realize that, because we were handed that budget right, you know, while we're in the middle of the meeting. So, I didn't, I didn't know that happened, or I would have addressed it then.
Well, it puts us kind of in a pickle too. That's all we have in there now.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's budget amendments, but, you know, I just, I don't want to, like I said, I, I understand being fiscally conservative and being responsible, uh, to the taxpayers as far as money is concerned, but also want to be, uh, privy to their safety and not want to hinder that at all. I mean, if some, if, if, if a fire department can't make a bank note on a, on a piece of equipment, that equipment's going away. And if it's because of, of what we've changed and what their normal budget is, you know, budget for fuel, well, I mean, you know, what's their budget for everything else? I mean...
We used to see the budgets. I don't, I don't know what happened or what point.
And depending on how many runs you make, you're spending more money with every run. So, and we're, we're, we're giving each fire department, you know, the same amount, whether they run, like I said, fifteen, fifty calls or they go a hundred-and-fifty calls. I mean, and that, there's more, more expense that occurred with that. So, I mean, Mary?
I would just like to state that, uh, we have set a, a protocol, I guess, or, for doing the run cost, but at the last auditor's conference that I went to, and Toledo can testify at this, we asked, when we had a, a group session with other counties our size, we asked how many of them gave run cost? None. And I've given you all the information where I've gone and looked, all the surrounding counties around us, how much they give to each department. No, I don't know if they all have ESDs, but I don't think they all do. We give more than any other county around here. I know that volunteering is a wonderful thing, and I know that it's time-consuming, but I also know you'll have fundraisers, and you don't just have to have a fundraiser in your community. You can arrange to have it at Walmart or somewhere around College Station to raise more money. I think, I think we've already beaten this a lot down, uh, today, and I just think that, you know, it's time to move on.
Well, and I appreciate your comments, but I want to give the commissioners fair time to, uh, air their concerns, and I appreciate that. Well, there's a motion, oh, excuse me, there is a, an agenda item in front of us, agenda item number eight, and I make a motion that, uh, we approve the contract as it's currently written on agenda item number eight in regards to the fire departments for the five that we have reviewed with BDIs, Shiro, Richards, Whitehall, and Todd Mission Volunteer Fire Departments. There's a motion before the court by County Judge Joe Fouth II by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
So it's four and one. Motion passes. We'll go to agenda item number nine, road and bridge engineer, Mr. Harry Walker, considering to take action to approve revisions to flood damage prevention order.
Good morning, everyone. The flood damage prevention ordinance is the main control to regulate development in our floodplains. Uh, the document we have was adopted back in 2012. It's a FEMA document that FEMA issues, um, so, you know, language is not a real creation, it's based on FEMA. Uh, in the draft ordinance, since FEMA has two versions of this, uh, the one we have says that if you are building or in a floodplain, you have to set the slab height of the house at that hundred-year flood level, what they call a base flood elevation. The other version of their ordinance says you can require the slab height, you set one foot above the floodplain. What I'm recommending is that we adopt the one foot above the floodplain criteria for development in the floodplain, and this is, only applies to building in the floodplain. But my, my reasoning for this is two-fold. One, Grimes County does not have a detailed flood study. Now, FEMA has not established actual elevations within the floodplain, um, so when we have a, a proposed building in the floodplain, uh, we have to rely on that developer or that residence, uh, engineer to determine what that hundred-year floodplain elevation is. So there's some uncertainty there. And then, secondly, and probably more important, uh, under FEMA's rules, they allow development within the floodplain to, to bring in fill that will actually increase the water surface elevation by up to a foot. They don't strictly prohibit development within the floodplain, and they allow you to encro, encroach on the floodplain and fill those fringe areas, uh, to the extent that you could raise the water surface by foot. So, it never made sense to me, uh, that you would set your criteria at the floodplain, and then legally a developer can come in and raise it up to a foot higher or something. I'm recommending we go to the more stringent standard. This is the only change I'm recommending that occurs in several places in the ordinance, uh, but I'm just requesting that we increase the criteria from slab height at the hundred-year floodplain level to one foot above the hundred-year floodplain level. Questions?
Do you know how many, do you know how many in-process residences this might affect as we speak?
I do not.
Okay. Because I know there's a lot of activity going on throughout the county, you know?
We, David may have a better handle on, on, uh, because he processes the, the permits for development in the floodplain. Um, do we have anything active that you're aware of, David? As far as for, for building within the floodplain?
Only, the only thing we have current, uh, is whenever we have pipelines coming in, uh, I require a permit for each entry point, and we have at least one pipeline that's still being built, so there are current permits in process, but as far as buildings per se?
Houses, okay.
And you have, Ms., I don't know her name, from Endeavor, she's with the flood, uh, FEMA. What's your name again?
Oh, well, Leah Jean Denley.
And you're with Endeavor's?
Endeavor's, we're a disaster case management agency.
You may know, because they...
Do you have?
They serve the residents of Grimes County. I do not have any data or information that I can share at this time.
Would you agree that what he's saying sounds like a good idea?
I would agree. Yes, sir.
It does to me, you know?
Yes.
I mean, especially if somebody's putting their cash down on a new home, the last thing we want them to do is flood.
And we could certainly provide an exception if somebody comes in and said, "I'm already under construction, I already had my plans designed," uh, and give them, you know, ninety days or something, uh, for sort of a transition period, so if we do happen to catch somebody, uh, in the interim of building, uh, we can allow them to use the old planter.
But we could, in good conscience, I think, let them know, "Hey, since you have applied and you received, we've made a change, and you're not obligated to that, but for your own protection, you know, a few more dump truck loads of dirt, which may be saved you."
Well, I think most engineers are going to put you at least six inches above the floodplain in a foundation.
Is that kind of a standard anyway?
You would hope.
A good, a good one, I'd say, a good one.
You know, and part of the problem is, again, when you're talking about, uh, you know, individual homes and things, where the homeowner may literally be designing a building themselves, uh, you know, the, the engineering judgment may not come in play.
Proceeding engineers.
Correct.
Okay. So do you have, do you have that document?
Um, I think it was provided to you.
I didn't see it.
I didn't make this agenda, I wouldn't have.
Don't put it on me.
I have a copy of it. Uh, there are, I believe, three places in the document where we just changed that wording, where it says, um, at the base flood elevation to one foot above, and I, I did send it to John C. to look at also.
All eyes are on you, Corey.
I, I think he would defer to Mr. Walker's wisdom.
Okay.
It's easier when he's not...
And who's the signatory on that modification?
Uh, the, the court, uh, now, in the, in the past, the county judge and the county clerk signed the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a motion on behalf of Mr. Walker?
If there's no further discussion, I move to approve the revision to flood damage prevention as Mr. Walker stated.
We have a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Road and Bridge, report, sir?
Thank you. The, uh, since the end of the fiscal year, we have completed all of our paving projects for last year, uh, then the project we've been working on that was not completed was County Route 174. We are continuing to work on that, uh, and hopefully, if the weather will cooperate for another week or two, we'll have that finished here, uh, within the next two weeks.
That was for 2018?
This was the, the plan for 2019.
Okay. That's complete.
We got all those roads done. 174 was not actually in the plan. 174 was not actually in the plan, uh, but it just was getting in such bad shape, we felt like we had to add it. So we are, we've got all the rock down on the road now and getting it processed. Unfortunately, the chip ceiling, there's some, some temperature constraints. And we need to catch up, uh, one of the warmer days next few weeks, two or three of the warmer days next few weeks, to get that complete. So pleased about that. In the meantime, we've also had to move back some of our more normal activities. Uh, we've put out a lot of level-up material, uh, to take care of some of the, the worst, you know, isolated problem areas on some of our roads. We've done a lot of patching, uh, just individual potholes. Uh, we've been catching up on some of the, the side booming and vegetation work. Kind of back into our normal, uh, routine. I would also remind everybody, uh, starting on November fourth, we're going back to our winter hours, back, back on five-eight hour days. That'll be from seven to three-thirty this year. We're gonna try, starting a little bit earlier and see how that goes. If it, if it proves to be an issue during the, the dead of the winter, we may adjust those hours, but for now, we're gonna try that.
Because they moved back, which would give you more daylight closer to seven, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it.
Fall back.
I, you know, I looked at the, you know, all of the astronomical tables and everything, and I, I think we'll be okay.
And that's starting November?
November fourth will be the first day we're back on five-eights. Elsewhere, the, the drainage crew's been busy, they spend a lot of time on 146 and 147. Uh, we have been able to hire, uh, the great oil operator for the new crew. Uh, he's working out real well. A gentleman by the name of Harvey Park. I think he's gonna do just fine. We're still in the process of hiring the rest of the crew. But that's, that's coming along. We've got quite a few resumes. It's just, there's a lot of competition out there now. Other counties and cities are also trying to hire at this time of year. The, elsewhere, uh, related to the, the item we just had, I am working on the review of the subdivision rules and drafting up some proposed changes that we bring in shortly. What we may want to do, when the time is right on that, is set up a committee to look over those changes. Because there'll be, um, quite a few, and it's kind of detailed one. So we might wanna think about who you might wanna have to do that when we're ready. It'll be a little while yet, there's quite a bit to go through. And I've been working on it, and some of it, uh, requires support from the attorney's office, so, uh, just moving forward on that.
Now, last time we had some realtors come in and give us some opinions. Talking about when you see a committee composed of?
Well, I would think of Commissioners Court. If we want to invite, um, folks from the development community, and I'm certainly open to that. I don't wanna do any of this, um, you know, in the dark and have them, um, be blindsided, so to speak. Right now, uh, there, there are a number of changes that came out of the legislature that we'll be, be forced to implement. Mostly has to do with, with restricting the amount of time we have to spend on doing plate reviews. But there are a lot of other changes that are, are, are gonna be my recommendations, to tighten up some of the areas, all the ordinances that we have that, uh, maybe could use a little improvement. Uh, again, we, what we may wanna do is have a committee from Commissioners Court and then invite, uh, interested parties in, uh, to have some background in, in development business.
One other question's from me for you. On the mowing and side booming, um, are there, have, have we addressed, uh, the southern part of the county, such as Whitehall and Courtney?
The contracts, mowers are complete, they were completed early September. Uh, this is work that's being done by our crew in the past meeting places. We're trying to catch up.
Well, I, I would ask that you look at Courtney and Whitehall. I don't see any of the, uh, streets there listed in the.
Those, most of those areas were handled by the, the contract, uh, mowers. So we don't do a lot of work there.
They side boom?
No, no, the, the shred.
I think a lot of.
Side booming, we can have them take a look at.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
I guess you'll have other questions.
Thank you. We'll go to our agenda item number ten, County Attorney John C. Foltz. I see that he is obviously not present, but he sent his first lieutenant. Uh, considering to take action to exchange an interest in certain real property in the D. Greg survey for an interest in real property in the D. Greg survey owned by Jim Westmoreland. Just to remind the commissioners, this is a kind of swap-for-swap land, and we have an agreement with, uh, Mr. Westmoreland, I do believe, that has been signed by you, correct? Okay. And it's met with the county attorney's approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And we ran the public notice as required. Uh, Mr. Westmoreland was the only one that actually made the offer, which confirmed what he'd already stated. Uh, the question now is whether you wanna table it until Mr. Foltz is here? Or whether you want to go forward with, um, working out the details with Mr. Westmoreland on an earnest money contract, which would have no money? Whether we wanna go forward with surveys, who's gonna pay for the surveys, title opinions, that type of thing.
Sounded like a lot of legal stuff to me. Do you have any thoughts, gentlemen, Mr. Westmoreland?
No, I just, uh, came today primarily in case y'all had come by, one commissioner's had questions, so I may have an answer. But I, they sent me the documents. And all I got out of them was it was a, an agreement that we're gonna discuss this.
Yeah, so, so the contract hasn't been drafted or signed. That's, i- if, if you wanted to work with Mr., if the court as a whole wanted to work with Mr. Westmoreland about the details, um, or if you wanna ask Mr. Foltz to do that, give him the discretion to go forward, and then we could bring the contract back to y'all. But the, the contract will then lay out who's gonna pay for what.
Okay.
Uh, there will be costs, you know, we need the surveys, um, likely title opinions are appropriate. It could be that he pays for his, we pay for ours, but it's, we have to work that out.
With that being said, what I would suggest, Court, is that we maybe table this with the instruction that we'd like John C. to visit with Mr. Westmoreland. And we can then put it on the next agenda, because the next agenda's not for a while.
November thirteenth.
Okay. So that should probably give us time to, to get that resolved. But as we move forward on the project, we wanna keep this moving forward. Would that work with you, with you, Mr. Westmoreland?
Yes.
All right. So would you, Court, is that agreeable to y'all, to table for the time being?
Yes.
Instruction to John C. to work on getting the details worked out with Mr. Westmoreland?
Yes.
All right. Let that be the record and then we'll move forward. All right. Agenda item number eleven, consider and take action regarding the burn ban. An authorized county judge's signatory, the burn ban was removed, ten sixteen nineteen. Forecast is tomorrow, twenty percent in the afternoon, and by Saturday, eighty percent. We've got a chief here, a chief back there. What's your recommendations, chiefs?
Uh, well, we're in, in the tran, in the middle of transition right now. We have good ground moisture. We have almost reached ground saturation, so we're starting to have runoff into our, into our basins and our ponds and stuff. I think we're in a very, very safe condition. However, we still have the issue that we're at the end of the growing season. And as you get to the end of the growing season, all of your understory fuels, your one-hour and your ten-hour fuels, dry very quickly even after a rain. So we're seeing, uh, some of the grass fires, some of the smaller grass fires that, that come up in the afternoon, as a result of either brush piles that are unattended or, uh, trash cans, waste piles that are unattended. And they get out of hand. So, uh, ten or fifteen mile an hour wind can, can definitely be devastating. But, uh, I believe that as a safe period, we're in a safe burn period as long as, uh, uh, burn piles and, uh, waste disposal is well attended.
Chief, well?
I would agree with what you just said.
Okay, seems good. Mr. Lilly? Reasonable to leave it on, I mean, leave it off?
I always defer to my, to the fire chiefs, uh, because I consider them the subject matter, subject matter experts in this. But I have noticed a slight increase in the number of calls that fire departments are being called out for. But as the chief said, these are mostly grass fires, uh, and they're able to keep those in hand. It's just, you know, I'm monitoring it, but I think at this time, I think it's safe to say. People are, the reason we're getting some of these fires is people are getting rid of their burn piles and not always doing it safely, but they are reducing the overall fire risk.
As if we, we let them continue to just build it up by the time they actually do go to burn. Citizens need a, need a chance, go ahead and burn it off. So even if it's a small window of opportunity and we gotta stay a little bit busy now, and we put the burn ban on later, it'll, it'll help the citizens out a long time.
So I'd recommend no action at this time? Is there concurrence on that?
Yeah.
Any updates on the strategic plan?
I would just like to say, we did have a very, uh, beneficial meeting, uh, with CHI St. Joseph and the ambulance services, discussing the future needs and, uh, discussing some of the growth in our areas and sitting down and talking with our cities to see, um, and subdivisions. We, we brought all of that to the table, to CHI, and they will be getting back with us soon. The contract is coming up for, uh, renewal, April twenty twenty. So, um, we're very hopeful that everything will work out just absolutely wonderful. And we'll have enhanced services for our community.
There you go. Anything else? Go to agenda item number thirteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number thirteen by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in fa, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, we adjourn.